I pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Teresa Dickelold, please.
Hey, Mayor Jones.
Here.
Bowen.
Here.
Walsager.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
Jazz.
Yes.
And Brennaman and Keel are absent with notice.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting?
I would make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Walsager.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Jazz.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
All right, how about approval of the minutes from nine five? We'll do that one for, we'll do them separate. Nine five and then we'll do the nine twelve.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from nine five as presented?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Bowen.
Yes.
Jazz.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Walsager.
Yes.
All right, how about a motion on minutes from the September twelve meeting?
I can vote on that if I wasn't here.
Right, good, yeah, if you don't vote, it's gonna die, so then we have to stop, kick everybody out, we're done.
I make a motion to approve the special meeting minutes from September twelve.
I'll second.
Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Walsager.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Jazz.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the bills that are submitted for paper?
Second.
Any discussion? I only see one thing and I already called Teresa and asked her, but it's on what break about? Find out things every day.
Yep, I'll do it every day.
All right, hearing no discussion, we will vote. Bowen.
Yes.
Jazz.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Walsager.
Yes.
All right, public comments from anybody who is not on the agenda? Why, let me scan quick here. Oh, I think we're probably okay. All right, next up, visitors, we have Amy here for the end of the season pool report. Highlight of the year.
Yes, it is actually. Um, actually, it was such a great summer. Um, weather was awesome. I had five of, I mean, actually, I think ten guards and five returning guards, so welcome back. Joss Jardine, Giselle Jardine, Avery Schmichael, Carter Schmichael, and Mara Schultz. And our new guards this year were Liam Schmichael, Karen Lemstrom, Kayden Slupke, Kaya Gabbard, and Luke Knight. Avery Schmichael, Joss Jardine, and Karen Lemstrom were also hired as my assistant managers. We had three daycare scheduled for morning swim. Again, this summer, we offered two swimming sessions, or swim lessons for the season, June and July. Both had awesome weather, attendance was full, so turnout was really good. This season, we sold 579 pool passes and we held thirty-one pool parties. One of our pool parties was reserved for the firemen, which we do every year. Golden West also re-reserved a pool party the last week of the season, which was a huge success.
Say, Amy, how is that number compared, 579 for passes? Is that up, normal, down?
It's higher. It was about, I think it's like around 150 to 200 higher.
Really?
From what I was trying to remember, for sure over 100.
I should've asked that. I thought about it when I read through this.
Cause I was gonna look to.
I pulled the attendance numbers, but I didn't pull the pool passes.
Okay, I'll just curious, I'll bet, I'll bet, snap.
Yeah, it was over 100 more, for sure. Probably closer than that, or 50 to two. Anyways, and then the Golden West we did last year, that was outrageous. So this year, we controlled it a little bit better and kind of scheduled more of the pieces to come, so it wasn't just everybody all at once. So that, that turned out good. We did that the last week of the pool on a Wednesday night. So I think we had 200, almost, almost 300, a little shy of that. We had ten trial sessions for an evening aerobic class towards the end of the season, because we had interest in an evening session. Because our morning, this, this summer was awesome, like this was the highest power hour we've ever had. I think the most from when I worked, I think the highest hour was 25, and our average was always around 30.
Yeah, or thereabouts.
Yeah, and 35, I think, was one of our max, so the morning session has really taken off. So we tried a 10 session at the end, five right in a row, and that first session was really high. And then, you know, everybody's so busy, but the others too, I think, were averaged around like 20 a session. So it was, it was a good turnout and, you know, not everybody knows about, so it's kind of a hard number to, to actually set or to, because it was towards the end of the season, so, you know, it's something to think about maybe for next year. But we also have those pool parties, and the five o'clock session is our highest num, that's the most popular, just because, you know, the 11 o'clock, people are working, the eight-thirty's kind of late at night. So five o'clock is our best one, so I don't know if it's something to think about next spring, we can look into that. Our lifeguards and assistant managers did an awesome job. Yeah, I was just so happy with our guards this year. They are reliable, responsible, just not a problem with them coming to work. So I really enjoyed them. I was, I'd love to thank Barb Tolliver, she always helps every year at the beginning of the season to do a drill for us. We didn't get it right before, just because kids' activities and I'm working, so we did do one, I think, the week after. So, and she did, I think, seven throughout the season, at least seven drills. And that helps the guards just to kind of stay on their toes and, yeah, so we appreciate all that she does for us. Also, thank the city employees for everything you guys do and the council too for working hard, taking time, and all of your support. Any questions?
I think the lifeguard just gets such a mood in the morning. Oh, they just laugh, they just sit there in chairs and laugh. Because I'm telling you, there's, there's some stories that are told that we shouldn't probably be telling with those lifeguards.
Yeah, that was their tradition. A lot of people like to look at power hour mornings.
It is fun.
It is.
I have a que, I have two questions. What's one thing, because you've been doing this for a while, right, at the pool? Probably ten years, maybe longer?
Longer.
Maybe longer?
I think, I think I was pregnant with Olivia, so almost seventeen or eighteen years, I think.
What's one thing you think that could make that pool better, but let me put some things on this? What's one thing that you can make, what's something that can make the pool better? But that could be from even like the membership costs or just other activities? Or what's something you think that the city could do to improve it without investing a million or two million dollars? You know, something reasonable, what's one thing that comes to mind? Maybe it's something in the concessions, I don't know.
Well, I know, we did talk about that one year, it was just too much, because you had to get training and all that stuff, the concessions. But I would say, I think our, everybody's so impressed with our hours, because we are the only pool that I know that are open morning hours. And so, you know, maybe to, because a lot of people don't know about the morning hours too. So every time they come, they're like, and we get people from Sioux Falls, like teachers that, gosh, we love them in the mornings, because, you know, they, they, their kids wanna sleep or take a nap. So I think maybe to maybe throw that out the door of, because we used to have the daycares come in the morning. And we, I mean, we still do, I shouldn't say that. And they still come, but it's just.
What time does the pool open? Is it like at 10? Is it nine or 10?
Um, it opens at eight-thirty to nine-thirty is our power hour. That's just the adult swim. And then after that, it's the nine, the morning swim, and that's for two hours, nine-thirty to 11:30. But then you have to take away swimming lessons, and we offer that. So out of the summer, it's actually four weeks of swimming lessons, a June and July session. So, I don't know, and I know they race the race, but we really didn't have a lot of people complain about that. Maybe for the infants, but then when I tell them, this is based on capacity, do you know what I mean? If you're, if somebody's in there that's an infant, and they're taking up a spot still, if somebody wants to swim, we're, we're counting it by the numbers, so regardless, because they're like, well, they're not swimming, and adults don't swim. But you're still, no, regardless if you're swimming or not, or watching, you're taking up that capacity, because we can only allow so many people into a facility. So, I mean, so that, I know people would like to see the family membership, but I think this year was a good way of doing it, about how to maximize the number or how much the families pay. You know, and it would be nice if you could figure out a way to, it's just hard, because I've looked around too. But, you know, because some families are smaller and some families are bigger, so like, we've always had that individual pass. Well, if you paid two people, that's the same as if you were paying for 10 people. And so I think this way is kind of a good in-between of how we did it this year. And maybe, you know, somebody can come up with even a better one in the future, but. Um, as far as the one thing, I mean, I love our, I love the small-town pools. I know people want big and, you know, I think maybe a slide, I think that would help get more, some of the older kids more involved, or a diving board, but.
Yeah, I wonder if our pool's deep enough, because I, because it's nine or?
It's not.
Is it a diving board? It's not?
Yeah, we can't do a diving board, but. But just more things for the older kids maybe to come, because you kind of get, when they start training for high school age, they're done with the pool.
Yep.
So if you could kind of bring in stuff that older kids, whether it's lap pool, I don't know.
Maybe you can do some type of, like that evening, like a teen.
Yeah.
Party. I don't know what foam does to a pool, but, you know, those are popular too, to have the bubbles and.
Right.
I think one thing, and I know I talked to you about it briefly a couple months ago, and we don't, we're not gonna, we don't have to discuss it tonight, but maybe just get our gears turning, is like, in that instance, because I had Hartford resident reach out to me early in the season, like, a transferable pass, something like, for example, if we get a family pass, maybe my, we have a babysitter.
Right.
You know, so I think that's something that, like I said, we don't have to discuss that tonight, but just plant the seed. What, what would that look like? A transferable pass for a babysitter or grandparent when mom or dad is gone, just something we can, yeah.
Right. Yeah, that's something to think about. The only thing, and I, I did talk to Teresa about that one year, and then, were they all passing it to, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I think, I think we could put some limitations on that.
Yeah, you have to limit it, because it'd be like, here, you go, give it to this one before they come in.
One person pay and fifty people lose it.
Yeah, you're always gonna find.
We also don't spend time like giving passes right now either.
Right. Families, so they know, so they basically check them out.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, and, I mean, to me, it's four dollars is, we're very reasonable. And I always tell people, you know, a candy bar and a pop is probably five dollars at the gas station, or a beverage at the bar is, you know, five, six dollars, so if this is four hours of swimming activity you could do with your kids, so I feel like we're on a good path, so.
Amy, you do a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate it. Any other questions?
It is fun.
Thank you.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you.
Being the resident, I'll pay it goes to our, or as we call it, sacred.
And to the one retirement or?
I know, it's fun, I'll tell you. When the day, the day swimming ended, I was so sad, I didn't know if I could even get on. All right, we're gonna move down. We got first up under hearing resolutions ordinances, is a hearing for resolution 2023-21 to annex a, submitted by Turtle Creek Highlands. This is part of a parcel of land that was overlooked in the original annexation. We're getting it, we found it, and we're, went through the steps to get it back and annexed it to the city.
Little corner by railroad and highway 38, and see, everything on the south side should be annexed in. Should've been annexed, annexed in with the original annexation, that was submitted to the city. But the legal description, which was literally a paragraph long, lengthy, seemed to omit it. Talked to the county about this. They said the easiest thing to do is, this has its own parcel ID. It's very easy to just have the owner submit an annexation petition for it, and then you get it annexed in. So that's the easiest and simplest way, rather than try to amend or redefine the legal description that was in the original one, I guess. So it's kind of just follow-up paperwork, and the owner has no problem with that, so.
Any action from the council?
Make a motion to approve the annexation petition submitted by Turtle Creek Highlands for parcel 78-591.
Scott, can it?
Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Walsager.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Jazz.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next up?
I do want to give you one caveat or a little heads up. There is also another little corner that's down by where the old Mickelson Road went out. Same thing, just a little triangle piece.
On Sam's too?
Yes, and that's part of a bigger parcel. It doesn't have its own parcel number, so the county is kind of working with their legal department to see exactly what we need to do to get that in, so.
Which side?
So that may be coming in the future. It's on the south side again, there's a little corner up by railroad, a little corner by the old Mickelson Road.
Somewhere there's, somewhere will be Mickelson, the old Mickelson Road.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah, and the part of the road we gotta annex.
Right up next to the highway?
Yeah, so, so I'm trying to work with the county on that. Like I said, this was easy, because it's its own separate little land and parcel number. The other one's part of a bigger, so we're trying to figure out what's the easiest and best way to do is that, so just give you a heads up on that.
You must have been, that doesn't, yes, that.
Oh, this is way unfortunate.
That's way before me.
I know, but I just have to. All right. Next up, second reading of order 747, this is our 2024 budget appropriation. We passed first reading last week at the special meeting. And this is to officially get it approved, so we can get it to the council.
Make a motion to pass amendment 747, the 2024 appropriation ordinance.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Bowen.
Yes.
Jazz.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Walsager.
Yes.
All right. Next up, special event for a man, West Central Homecoming. Seven eighteen, sorry, you hadn't, you know, stayed eighteen minutes, sorry.
That's all right. That's all right. Yeah, homecoming is next week, so the parade will be next Friday, the 29th, and so the paperwork I submitted, using the same route that we used last year, is what we were thinking, line up on railroad, and then meander all the way up, come, go north on Main, and then east on Second Street, and up to Middle School. And I don't think we actually blocked any roads off, but we just made, I don't know, we, we just notified people on Main not to park there somehow. I can't remember what we decided about.
Blocked anything off.
Yeah, I think we just kind of reminded people not to park on Main Street, because I know there's a lot of people that come up on this part here, so.
Yeah, that'd be the only thing, what if we, day before or something, just start going around and towing their cars? Maybe not that.
We've never called her one. Has, has Damian?
No, we've never, we just.
I was gonna say, I think, I don't know if people just naturally.
I think they naturally know.
Yeah.
They know your freeway route's there.
Yeah.
Yep, so. I do have a second thing, which isn't on here, so, but I told the kids I would ask, I said it's very sharp mode, so I don't know. But they, maybe you've seen some other schools do this, because it's on Facebook, but they would like to, other schools would use paint, I'm saying chalk. But basically, take like Thursday night before homecoming and have a section of Main Street where they would chalk like class of 2024, and then every senior could write their name somewhere on Main Street and decorate it somehow. So wash away, obviously, eventually, but it would be there for like Friday, homecoming, and just kind of, I could show you pictures if you want to know how they're supposed to do it.
I think it would be a great idea. My only concern would, would be, would we have to block Main? It's a lot of traffic that's coming through, you got kids on the road.
Right.
Right. That would be, I think it's a great idea. I think it's just one of those things to where, yeah, there's a lot of.
Right.
Traffic.
The rain chances went down.
Yeah.
What time do, what time do they do it during?
Well, we, when looking at the activities calendar, it'd be next Thursday, like around seven-thirty-ish, like seven-thirty to eight-thirty.
Yeah. Yeah.
It'd be the time, right?
In, in the evening?
Yeah, in the evening, sorry, yes, in the evening.
So you're thinking like one block, like the block right here in front, or?
Whatever, if you were interested, whatever we could do, like whatever would be easiest, even if it's the block in front of the South Bar, if that's easier, or, or the little section between First and Main, like that little square section there or something.
The South Bar, that the parents could come along.
Actually, someone suggested that.
That's not surprising.
I don't think it'd be a huge deal just to have some cones set out and block the road.
You want to block the road. The other thing.
Just won't block the road, but just maybe the side, or just area that they're doing it in, so it doesn't get bright.
Yeah, and I figured, I mean, they're, they're old enough, I mean, you know, it's not like little kids that people won't see or anything, and if we had adults out there too, helping.
Yeah, the other thing we should make sure though, that we do is, we should probably let the deputies know. If they're out here, you know, the night deputies, so they at least know, because.
That's not vandalizing the streets.
No, no, not that, well, maybe, but at least let them know, it'd be, you know, and that's good PR for them too, gives them a chance to. That's what I was saying, they didn't give them a chance to.
Yeah, so whatever section of Main you think would be easiest to do that on, I think they'd be.
It's gonna make a bitter difference that time of night.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's going to be second first here.
Yeah, that or, what do you think, Craig?
It's, I do, it's right out here.
Right on your front?
Sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, and we'll just make sure that we got the, got our barricades or something to set out for that timeframe.
So you're thinking Thursday at seven-thirty?
Yeah, seven-thirty.
Not this Thursday.
Yeah, the night before, yeah.
The night before, homecoming, yeah.
We'll just set up some cones out down here by City Hall, and you guys can just grab them, put them in the lock off for what you do.
Yeah, and then if you can, let Deputy Carter's know, maybe he can pass that along to the night people.
Yeah.
We shouldn't need a motion to, we shouldn't need to include that. Will we still need a motion for this?
You will for the special event.
Yeah, I make, I make a motion to approve the special event application for the West Central Homecoming Parade.
Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Mattson.
Yes.
Walsager.
Yes.
Jazz.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
All right. Tell the seniors the city likes them.
Okay, I will do that, I can.
That is a good idea. That really is a cool idea.
It'll be fun, it'll be fun to see it, yeah. Thank you.
You bet. All right, we're gonna move into reports. First up, Hartford area fire, Chief Chu Mager presented his report, it's in your packet. Dan calls in Hartford, that's about what they've been averaging?
I think it's about the same or, yeah.
Yeah.
Third.
All right. Next up is Amy's report, and Amy's out sick today, so again, you know, review that, anything you need to add on that, Teresa, that you know of?
Nothing that's different than, I guess, what she.
Right. And we'll say, Amy did a nice job with the groundbreaking.
That was awesome.
Yes.
Getting the signs and shovels and getting every, got us a speaker system, that was, that was really nice.
Yeah, worked well.
Yeah, it was a very. All right, so we'll wheel through that, and then I think we're up to engineers report, Justin is here. Michael asked for PTO, can't believe it.
I mean, actually, he might, too, well.
Hey, wait.
I think he did that one other time, and I thought we had the conversation, I guess, been doing enough training on that. Yeah, I don't know, I think he might've steered him away for this meeting, Arden.
Yeah.
You know, there's, there's nothing crazy for us to talk about tonight, I mean, everything's good. Yesterday, we had the groundbreaking, like noted, it went really well, so high regards to Amy, city staff, and you, Arden, on getting everything going there, good turnout, really excited to see Dirk moving out there, so. We had pre-construction meeting after that, we got a big, long project schedule, so I'll send it out to council just high level, but goal for this year is to get that air lot in the ground, get concrete poured, depending on how winter is, start with the operations building. In addition, the utility collection system will start this fall, and then see how far we get. So there's gonna be a lot of activity going on, and there's gonna be a lot of stuff done this year, and a lot done in 2024, so we're gonna start.
I stopped in yesterday and sat in on part of the pre-con meeting. I would tell you, it's, it's encouraging to hear how excited, excited the subcontractors were for this project. That is really, that's really exciting. Man, they were, yeah, jeez, we like this, we're gonna, we're gonna get bored underneath, I think they're gonna try to get that board underneath the interstate, aren't they, this fall?
Yep.
So, I mean, yeah, it was.
They're ready to go.
Who's doing the board? Is it, that's not Sue Kup doing it as a number?
No, Site Works has the prime, but Carstensen?
Carstensen, yes.
Is the sub that's doing the board. Yeah, they have three of their guys here.
Yeah, one, one of the beauties this year that we've been hearing is that it's been pretty good weather so far. A lot of these contractors are looking for that fall work now, so it worked out really well with how we got everything going, so.
Yeah.
They can get in, any pipe that they get in now is just gonna be benefit for their own, so.
Yeah.
Everybody's already gearing on there, you'll see, we have, we will have two project signs along the project, one off of Highway 38, just big four-by-eight, you know, state and future home of the Hartford wastewater treatment facility. And then we're gonna put the other one up along the interstate, so with the road work going on there, the cars going by slow, it'll be some nice visibility, so, yeah. And then, the other big thing I got for you, Western Avenue, Teresa and I, we met with the DOT on Monday as well, just coordinating project bidding, et cetera, on that one. So we are gonna build it, bid it in conjunction with the DOT, but the beauty is, once we get that bid, that's gonna become the city project, and so then we're not gonna have to fall under the federal requirements. If we would have those, because we talked about having all-in-one contract through the DOT, and then with our monies being in that, we would be under the hook for all the federal requirements.
There'd be a lot more regulations, stipulations we have to follow and pay for.
So it's extra on top of it, but the nice thing is, we can bid those together. They're gonna have this special provision in there where the contractor is required to bid both packages. That way, we can still get the same prime contractor, the requirement to bid both, and then a little bit is gonna be awarded based on the composite total. So, one of our concerns was having two different contractors, and then that'd be a coordination nightmare.
Yep.
We're gonna navigate that.
Okay, good, good, good.
So we're on plan with that. They actually moved their bidding schedule back two months, so we're still gonna follow their schedule for now. If it keeps going further back, then we can have that conversation, and we can always talk ourselves into it. Project or not. And then since we get in 2025? Twenty twenty-five. It'll begin, and then how long of a project is that, from, you know, the whole, not just the city part of the bridge? It's gonna be a long one.
Yeah.
Like a year?
I'd say a good year.
I said, I think probably the whole season, the whole year.
Yeah, it's gonna be tore up for a while.
It will be kind of a nightmare for that one year, but Lisa, it will be done in the same year, and we can move on if that is.
Yeah, that's the other big efficiency.
More toward one year, more toward the other.
Doing it all together at once, like we've talked about a couple times, first, you know, the DOT doing their portion, and then a couple years later, doing the city portion, which would just.
Yeah, that's not, no, we got to build them there, doing it.
So it's gonna be a little bit of a mess there.
Just, it'll still be something, yeah.
That's engineer speak for a little bit of a mess. That's engineer speak for, it's really gonna be bad.
Between, between time to time, in and out of time, the way it is now, it's just like.
Hopefully, the interstate project will be done, and all the detours through Highway 38.
They don't start tearing up 38.
We hate to have a gap between all this money we're spending, you know, it'd be nice just to roll from the wastewater treatment plant right into that project. Let's just keep it rolling.
Yep, let's just keep on going.
Yikes.
The first couple of months of the project be a good opportunity for council members to be at City Hall.
I work from home, we can set up an office here, I'll take all those calls.
Yeah.
But there is a lot of correlation between HR during, that's doing the DOT portion, and IHG right now, just on the traffic control on that. So there's gonna be a lot of elements of how they can bait the traffic to get onto Western Avenue, and how we can bait it through. So it'll be an ongoing conversation, and plan for the best.
It's gonna make Mickelson Road busy. We'll get to see some extra traffic.
I wanna talk about it. There's pilot cars and. And I know that's not IHG, but how long is that project, and how far?
And, and I know that's not IHG, but how long is that project, and how far is that three lanes going on thirty eight?
It's gonna tie into the three lanes down there by, it'll be all the way.
All the way.
To, uh.
Nicholson, it'll be like a hundred, a couple hundred feet past Nicholson.
This way, but then the other way, all the way to?
The other way, it's gonna go just past, uh.
That ground.
Jeffrey?
She, she's talking about, um.
Oh, this one here, oh, I said you want the three lane up here, this is, uh, gonna start.
No, you're talking the one, you're talking thirty eight.
I'm talking thirty eight.
The thirty eight progress going on right now.
Three lanes down here by railroad, and it's gonna go, it'll be going up to Hartford Heights.
Well, they're coming all the way to railroad, with three lanes.
It's gonna be where the Colton Road railroad is now.
I know.
And to Hartford Heights, it'll tie into the three lane there, and November.
Are they, are they gonna get that done?
November seventeen, so this is their completion date, so, contractor's supposed to be done by then.
We need them, and it's gonna go all the way to where its three lanes are ready by Hartford Heights?
Yeah, it'll pretty much be three lane from Hartford all the way to Hartford's.
Yeah.
Or will be three lane.
Or pretty much, almost, almost with the interstate, yeah, almost the bridge.
I think they're gonna go to Hartford.
November seventeen, okay.
Write that down.
I'll put that in my calendar.
They said we'll probably pilot car, at least probably through October.
Yep.
That bold, right?
Yeah, so, yeah.
See, if you wake up early enough, though, they're not even there.
You're right.
When you miss them.
Neither am I, but I still have to get up.
All right, Justin, anything else?
Other than that, I don't have anything new exciting unless you guys have some questions for me.
No. Thank you for everything, and it's, uh, yeah, it was good to.
I guess I've got one question, I always have questions when you're here, and you're great at answering them, um, on like the engineering cost for that Western Avenue project, is there like a cost breakdown for that?
Yeah, yeah.
Cause I was looking, I, Teresa did send me the information, but, um, do you have a cost breakdown for that that you could send, and maybe, and I, I know when it was presented to the council, probably two months ago, I think it was just the cost, but it wasn't the breakdown of that, so, I'd like to see that.
Okay.
Anything else, Chuck? That it?
Was it, was that a question? Oh, that was a question, yeah, that was a question.
Anything else, Chuck?
No, okay, okay.
All right, thank you, Justin. Craig, you're up next.
Um, starting out with downtown, uh, the committee, uh, gave me a holler the other day about possibly having one of our trucks down here for the touch truck or whatever, so, then they were talking about painting the flowers or whatever, your handprints or something like that, so I said, run it by you guys and see if you're okay with it, I'll get somebody down there with the trucks.
I, that's a great idea, when I, when I seen that, I thought that's a great idea.
Yeah, I'll get somebody down there for that.
Yeah.
The only other thing to add in my report is, uh, the water, uh, reports have been sent into Danner, and so have the wastewater reports for the, this month, coming up, um, and then the parks, we should be, we should have that dugout that we're rebuilding done probably tomorrow, so, we're pretty close on that completed, and then if you, anybody's wondering what all the commotion was down here today, uh, there was a gas line that was abandoned, but not capped, that they did not mark, and, that biggest probably two inch gas line, and they bore right through it today, so. Fire trucks are there, we had the road blocked off, it was pretty good, so, the looks I see, they're now, you're getting it fixed right now, but, the road is blocked for probably, well, it started about probably three thirty, I think it was, when they hit it, so. So if anybody asks what commotion was, and why the fire trucks are here, and everything was going on, blocked off, that sewage gas line that got hit, that was not marked, so. That's all I got in the report, unless anybody has anything.
Well, that's exciting, you should have led with that.
Coming back to the water, what's the goal with submitting all this information, are we gonna have to replace lines or what?
No, so, I'm, EPA now, this has been going on for quite, we've been talking about it for quite a few years, um, it's October of next year, like the fourteenth or seventeenth, something like that, all this stuff has to be submitted to EPA, um, throughout the state, and that's, that's not us submitting it, we're submitting it to, um, you know, it's, uh, H. Bartlett and West is, uh, doing it, and then, um, it goes to the state, they're gonna, they'll handle all, we have to enter everything into the computer, into our system, and then they will take and put it on maps and whatever else, and at this point, um, I think we've notified, we've already talked to homeowners before about what lead lines, we have eleven in town, um, so they're kind of aware of it, um, and then eventually there will probably be something set where it's gonna, maybe mandatory that they have to do it, but the thing about it is, there will be grant money out there, but you have to go from the main to the house with it, and since we've already got our, from the main to the curb stops, a majority of the town already poly, we wouldn't qualify for the grant unless we tore our street up and put that line in brand new, so, it's not gonna pay to go after grant money to do this here, I think the best thing to do is notify the homeowners, you know, the formal letter and that stuff again, and letting them know that, you know, you do have a lead line, um, you know, this is your private line, and see if they wanna take care of it themselves, and if they don't, then I'll draw, well, take it from there, so.
What'd you say with that, Craig, eleven?
Eleven, yeah, and it's, it's probably, once they get all the information, it'll probably be another two, three years before they decide what to do with it, so, EPA's not real fast with anything, so, it's, but we'll have, we've got all, everything documented, we're hoping next week, you can start down, just start entering it, we'll have like twelve hundred homes that we have to enter in the computer on what we have, so me and Justin, I said, now we'll start plugging away on those and getting those entered, so.
I've got a que, um, those at the park today, why'd they take the water fountain out at the park?
Um, it got vandalized about three years ago, and we just have not replaced it, we haven't talked about, we're gonna do a cooler one and that, but we just haven't replaced it.
Okay, and then the other thing, so, and this, so we own, we, the city, the bike paths along thirty eight?
Yep.
We upkeep those, correct, those are our bike paths, so I think it was yesterday or two days ago, I was coming back into Hartford, I know they're doing construction out there, but I saw two gas company trucks driving on that, on that bike path, which didn't make sense for me, first off, cause there's a big ditch there, and that, those bike paths are not built to support heavy duty trucks, so I think.
They're not supposed to be.
We catch them, yeah, we have to call the deputy on them or something.
Okay, cause I was.
At least if you can even get, like, if it's a company, let us know the company.
It was a, it was a gas, it was a, it was a gas company, had red lettering, white trucks, and I was driving past, I don't think it was, I don't think it was Mid-American, it, I, it was a gas company, had gas on it, okay, and both of them were just, you know, parked, they were actually just like, I saw them drive over, and they were just like parked right there, and I was like, that's kinda, because you can't be on those.
No.
So, so something that.
We'll have to.
Maybe just talk to the contractor.
Yeah, if we can figure out who it is.
Yeah, if we can figure out who it is, yeah, no, they're not supposed to be.
Okay.
Yeah, they're not.
If I drive by them, and I see those trucks, then I can.
Personal.
Yeah, okay.
Take a picture.
I'll take a picture, and I'll call up, I'll call up, I'll call Laneos and go right to the truck.
Yeah, he goes right to.
We have a deputy adopted, that's right, all right, anything else for Greg? All right, thank you, Craig, thanks for all your work out there, too, at the site, and get that ready. All right, Karen, what do you got for us?
Oh, my report's in the packet, pretty standard stuff, nothing to add, so.
See, our August, uh, that's when he's good, just like that. Anyone have any questions for Karen? If not, Teresa, what do you got to add to yours?
Nothing just to add is, um, on the transit bus, we do have an advertisement ready to go and solicit bids, um, we're gonna let it advertise basically until the end of October, so, uh, we're gonna get it out, we're gonna send it out to all the groups we have, and get it to all the municipalities, and any other bus companies we can find, and Rock's gonna help us advertise as well, so, um, like I said, we'll, we'll take visits at the end of October, and then see if we can get something for that, and then, um, just wanted to give you an update, um, like I said, we've got the, the lip grant, you know, came through, we are still waiting on the EDA, I haven't heard anything yet, I was just, I was hoping the few days we'd hear it yet, cause they kinda go hand in hand, but I have not heard anything.
I was gonna say, it's kinda strange that they would give us that one without.
Right, that, that's kind of a supplement to the EDA, they kinda go hand in hand, so, like I said, I, I hope it's a good sign, but I haven't heard anything officially yet, so, so we'll let you know as soon as they do, and real, and one thing to add, um, that just came up, um, Sandy Dean was in, um, came down to City Hall, and you know how they put the historic picture on Bob Luters, um, she would like to do four more pictures like that, I'm wondering if she can, they can put them on the city shop building, so the one that's along Main Street, our, our big yellow building there, she'd like to do four pictures, very similar to that, um, two would be of one of the old, old depot, and the one of the depot that replaced that one, and then one of the elevators, original elevators, and the other one, what was the other one gonna be, um, oh, there was a, a crash, there's a picture of a, when a train crashed, so, I guess she wants to put that up there, um, she just got, like, she just came in this week, and it was too late to get on the agenda, she'd like to apply for, uh, a grant from the Hartford Community Foundation, and so she just wants to know if it's okay if she moves forward with applying for that grant, if we had any bigger objections to put it up there or not.
She wants to put all four of them along our building?
Yeah, she wants to put all four of them on the city building.
Any problem with that, Greg?
I don't know.
And there's usually nothing parked on it, it's.
Very seldom.
Very rarely, yeah, that'd be the only thing we would want, why they parked in front of them, they're gonna put them there.
Yeah, and like I said, it's, it's gonna probably depend if they get the grant or not, but she just didn't want to move forward with applying for the grant unless, you know, it's more like a no.
Downtown Hartford.
Yeah.
Yes, and Hartford Hartford's gonna apply for this grant and come up with the funds for it, but they wanna put them on the city building, so I'm just wondering if we have any objections to that.
I don't see any.
I don't want any objection, I.
We didn't see any, but we've.
Right, I'd say ever move forward.
Contempt is okay, okay, I'll tell it, go ahead and move forward, that's, so, all right, contact her and.
Anything else, any questions for Teresa?
Nothing to share questions.
All right, we have nothing on your old business, on your new business, first off, release of hometown Christmas twenty twenty three budget allocation for ten thousand dollars, I see Miss Lisa showed up to talk to us, or to see what we're gonna, you don't need to say anything if you, if you don't want, this is your last year of money, right?
That's your money.
Yep.
Well.
Well, approved last year, it's your money, yes, right, however you wanna say it.
So, no, or, I don't know if you'd have pushed us for us, cause we were just here, I think, a couple weeks ago, but we're rocking the roll, and getting going for this year, so.
Yeah.
Christmas and Toyland's the theme, so.
Christmas and toy.
Heck, I see Christmas decorations off.
We gotta interact together early this year.
If we're gonna do a float, we gotta get ready.
I think there should be a city council float.
Yeah, there should be a city council float, I think Cindy is our float coordinator.
That sounds like a terrible idea.
You know, usually the terrible ideas are.
She's better at it, she did it for the, whatever, yeah.
For the.
Do you come up with the idea and then make that new one?
What's the idea?
Christmas and Toyland.
Christmas and Toyland.
Did we get, did we order banners?
Did you order a permanent bath?
They're all different kinda sizes, you can get, unless you know which are putting them on, it's really hard.
I want one about.
About yay, by yay.
Six foot long, four foot high.
It's really specific.
Christmas and Toyland.
We'll, we'll look into that some more.
I'd make a motion to approve, uh, the release of the twenty twenty three budget allocation to Hartford hometown Christmas.
And second, did you second Jay? Any discussion? Hearing non-will vote, Jazz?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Waslaw?
Yes.
Thank you, Lisa, for everything you guys do.
I'm rather reasonably excited for hometown Christmas already, I don't know why.
That's good, though, that's good.
Yeah.
You know, one of the most, one of the most wonders we had, we had kind of a hay rack with, uh, bleachers or something on it, and we all sat on there and rode, it's boring, right?
It's not that hard, we could do that again.
I mean.
With a banner.
With a banner, I think it'd be.
With a banner, Christmas lights, and something hot to drink with you.
Hot to drink, yeah.
I will take.
Now, you're talking.
I will take charge of this project.
All right.
He's gotta put in the light, bright, bright light.
He's gonna, yeah, understand how to motivate me.
Good enough, thank you, Lisa, for everything you do. Okay, next up, renewal of West facing billboard number five for Central States Manufacturing, this is another three year renewal on their present lease, sign is there, everything's good, we're just renewing them.
The, the billboards are already up there, this is just when they come to terms, they have, um, a chance to renew it before it expires, and they, they wanted to renew it for another three year.
And I know we've talked about increasing our price, but how do we do that when we have a?
Like I said, you know, I knew this renewal coming up, and I've already was in talks with Maple Pass and Ace about the two free ones, I think maybe the best thing to do is, before the end of the year, maybe November, December, we look at it and then make an effective day like January first, and then go forward from there, and if anyone's gonna come up or any new ones, that will be, you know, the, the, the day.
When was, cause that, now, maybe you brought that up, um, when was the last time we increased prices, and I think, Bill, there's different prices for different billboards, you, you don't have to date too hard for it.
It is, probably.
A long time ago?
Six years ago, yeah, it's been a little while, yeah.
Because like, do, so they pay a hundred and fifty a month, and then that covers electricity costs, or, do, do they have lights on them?
Yep, they have lights, it, for just the base rent of the hundred and fifty, they get light on them from dusk till midnight, and we have a couple of them that pay extra to get lighting all through the night, and, and then we charge them extra for that, yeah, but, but just the base rent is, it's a standard three year lease, they get lighting, like I said, from dusk till, till midnight, we, we have them on timers and sensors, so, um, they pay for the banner, put it out, it's just.
It seems like a great deal for a billboard, a hundred and fifty a month, which is not a bad thing.
We were more expensive for the ones going east towards Sioux Falls, um, but we were, we were having a hard time renting them out, so, a few years ago, the council dropped them down to get them rented out, because at one point, we had about, I think all but one empty, yeah, but, but now getting filled up, this one, and if the Maple Pass one goes through, like I said, I'm talking to Ace too, we will have all of them filled, then on both sides.
That's awesome, yeah.
And then, yeah, I said, then we'll have them all filled, and look at January first, yeah, changing our rates for anything going forward.
All right.
Make motion for the billboard, these three things, Central States, and see if.
Second, any discussion? If not, we'll vote, Mattson?
Yes.
Jazz?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
All right, next up is to approve new billboard lease agreement, West facing number one for Maple Pass.
Make a motion to approve the billboard lease between Maple Pass and State Hartford.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing non-will vote, Bowman?
Yes.
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Waslaw?
Yes.
All right. Next up, we're gonna review and discuss proposals for engineering service on Twelve Street and Oaks Avenue, this is our load project that we are awaiting EDA grant, Teresa laid it out in the packet, um, the, 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 infrastructure design group's been doing the work for, on Oaks for the Hartford area development, uh, I don't know, Vice, do you, have you done anything on Twelve, no?
Uh, just some high level.
Just, yeah, that was done, anything that was done on that was been a while, while back.
Yeah, yeah, we first started looking at Twelve, so they did a little bit of Twelve, like, Bill was here with infrastructure, um, AJDF started with them, so.
Yeah.
Any of our, um, figures or estimates that we needed for the grant, um, infrastructure design, has put those together, so that they, they are familiar with the project.
Not only for Oaks, but for Twelve?
Yes, 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 they, they gathered all those numbers for us, so.
Have we used that previously?
City hasn't.
Contractors have, or developers have.
What's?
Developers have.
Developers have, city has not, but, uh, the Development Foundation, boy, how long ago that, couple years? Couple of years ago, you guys have been working with them, so, and, uh, they both gave us a proposal, you can see those numbers in there. And we feel that it's better to have one, probably makes more sense to have one do them.
We're just talking with CCOG and, uh, the grant people, you know, this is basically one project under the grant, so, um, it'd be best to have one engineer for doing the whole project versus having one do one street and one do the other, you know, split, once again, a coordination thing, that's just, it's just hard, so, um.
Fairly significant difference, huh?
Yeah.
Utilities are in on Twelve, so, except for storm sewer, something like that, water and sewers all been put in. Utilities are in on Twelve, so, except for storm sewer, something like that, water and sewer's all been put in.
Right.
So you'd have, you'd have sewer going up Ninth Street and water going up Ninth Street for utility ones.
Right.
Teresa, how does this work? Like, so for example, this is a new development north of town. The city can solicit bids for that project, for the engineering.
The project will have to be bid out.
Will have to. But I'm talking, I'm talking, I know, I'm talking on the engineering. So for example, we're able to get bids for this. So is there like a state law, like for example on Western, Western Avenue? So we have to use our city engineer for a project like that?
You don't have to.
For a professional service, you can hire whoever.
And yes, for engineering service, you can hire whoever you want. You just in quotes, you don't have to bid it out like you do the project.
Okay. Yeah, and so when we become city engineer for the city, we enter in a contract, we specifically say within that contract that the city can use anyone for, you know, the engineering work. We like to have that open honesty with the city that we're working for. There are gonna be some projects, you know, like this is where Phil has, and IDG has some initial background work on it. Teresa and I had a conversation on it, you know, in some regards, would I love to do the project? Absolutely. You know, those guys have been working on a lot of it. And so I presented both of these proposals here, so I had the opportunity to do that. You know, we always wanna give that opportunity. Obviously, we would love to do everything, but an instance is like this, so.
And I know, cause I, I, when I was on the HADF, I think when we chose our, our engineer for that development up there as part of those conversations and we solicited three bids for that, and we actually didn't even go with the lowest bidder, but a lot of it's, um, and this is what kind of brought me up to the, um, the delivery method of like the details of like breaking down those engineering costs. It's like when we were with HADF, like, that was a kind of like a big thing for HAF, just seeing those line by line items. And I don't see that, and I'm not trying to hammer on you, I'm trying to give positive feedback on this. Yeah. But I don't see those engineering costs broke down in, there, there's a big difference, as Cindy noted. Yeah. And I don't see, where's the difference? Yeah. You know what I mean?
Yeah, and so on the background, just for your awareness, we do this, you know, I went to Phil's, I think Phil has a, I figured out better than, than I do. But when I go through and do estimating too, we go through and we do hour per hour breakout and then we look at total construction cost, estimate engineering fee too as well. So do two of those different delivery models. If you would like, that we provide these breakdowns, I can gladly do that in the future for you.
I just think it's great just to look at it, yeah.
And we've already actually got it surveyed, the topo.
I was just gonna say, they've done a lot of the survey already, so that brings the cost down.
Right, so there's like forty, fifty grand or something, I think.
Lot of work done.
Was this, uh, was this, you guys did the surveying on that land?
Uh, and for Twelve Street.
Yes, they need it for the.
We surveyed and bonded for that and we did for that contract, I think it was a lot of ten thousand.
Okay, gotcha. So ISG would basically be surveyed because they're not gonna, not gonna go off another engineer's survey because if something's wrong, it's gonna come back on them, so.
You'll find that's what you typically run into on these things.
Nobody wants.
I don't know how to engineer though.
Yeah, you know, like I said, there's definitely the efficiencies, you know, and you know, like I said, I know IDG has a good reputation, you know, as a city engineer, we'll still review plans and work, but Phil, we're probably working with Bowen some of the stuff, just on the initial EDA grant proposal, so, um, I mean, to be honest, if you guys have to look it up paper on paper, I'll let you guys make the decision.
Yeah.
And make a motion to approve the proposal from IDG contingent that we receive both the EDA and the grant for the project.
Second, any more discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Jazz?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Wassler?
Yes.
All right. So now let's just wait for the.
Hope the grants come through.
Right. Was this supposed to be September to hear on the EDG?
But they said it's a month, so it could be.
Week and a half, and like I said, once we got the lip, I thought it'd be any day now, so.
When, when would construction start on that? Would they start breaking ground this year or?
They have to, I think this year, next spring would be.
Yeah, uh, late winter, early spring designing.
Cause you still gotta, just, just, you know, need to design it, yeah, that takes a little while.
All right. Good enough. Thank you both for putting the proposal together for us. All right, hold on, I got one last thing on the agenda.
I told him, I said, hopefully that's what Phil's here for.
No, he, yeah, hey, would we have, would we ask Justin to leave?
Oh, yeah, it's engineer.
Yeah, oh, yeah, we're, we're waiting this. Never even thought of that. That's good.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Thought about that.
I would expect you to say something like that, Ari.
Coming on.
I am asleep at the switch. Oh, man. All right, all right, the last thing on the agenda is mayoral, mayoral appointments for our city attorney and city engineer for twenty-three, twenty-four. First off, I would like to appoint our city attorney as Freeburg Nelson and ask for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four year.
Do you separate?
Yeah, we'll do them separate.
I make a motion to appoint Freeburg Nelson and ask as city attorney for twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four.
You make a motion to approve the appointment, so.
Yeah, to approve the appointment, yeah.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Mattson?
Yes.
Wassler? Jazz? Bowman?
Yes.
I would also like to appoint as city engineer for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four season, ISG.
Has a chance.
I didn't wanna look up.
I make a motion to approve that.
Second, any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Mattson?
Yes.
Wassler? Jazz? Bowman?
Yes.
I can remember a couple of years when that was a more contentious conversation.
It was all funny.
I can remember a couple of years early on when I was on council, that that was a contentious conversation. Yeah, those happen. All right? Anything else? Do we wanna, anything for executive session? Huh?
Me?
Nope.
I'd like to make a motion to.
Go into exact for?
Economic development and personnel.
All right.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Are we ready? Motion to adjourn from somebody?
Yep, someone.
And a second. All in favor? Thank you very much.